I would just note that the adjustment is made based on the last projection. And the superintendent was talking about the adjustment to the transportation has been accounted for in the references.
We'll be all set with budgets, please. Okay. Let's see. Monthly subcommittee reports. We have the monthly status reports. If we have any questions on those comments. Okay. We're all set with those?
Yeah.
Bob? Uh, new business? Approve the new high school course offering. Okay. Over you up.
Oops. Sorry. I wasn't sure if I heard in my house, Bob. So we have a number of new courses that we are proposing for school committee approval this evening. The first three are all under the history department and economics course, sports and society, and war, genocide, and peace. And Mrs. Wilmot is here today to answer any specific questions you may have. But in general terms, three, these three, these three courses are being offered as electives. And at this point, the history department does not know if all three courses will run. What Mrs. Wilmot and her department plans on doing is serving the students to see where the most interest is and then running that course. And she also spoke about cycling, perhaps cycling through these courses on an every other year basis. So over the course of the student's high school experience, they will have had the opportunity to take all three courses. Barbara, anything else you'd like to add to that?
No, you did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilmot.
So, if I understand, so you'll serve each of the kids and whichever one seems to generate the most interest?
Yeah, well, actually, I do have something to add.
Please do. No, please, please do.
Okay, so I actually did, or I did a survey about maybe 150 of the 10th and 11th graders because they're the ones who next year would most likely be taking the courses. I haven't really looked at the data about what we plan to do, so I just did the survey the last few days. So I haven't really looked at where things are falling. But I did just survey them about those three courses. I put all the electives that we ever potentially offer on the survey. And then once we see where the most hits are, we're going to offer those up and then up for like putting in the program of studies. So we'll put them in the program of studies and then the kids will be free. But we're not putting every course we've ever offered in a program because then what happens is you have this, just, yeah, it's all just first that nothing runs.
Right.
So, and I told the kids, all the kids that I surveyed, that some of the courses may run on an every other year basis. And so we see kind of a lot in, say, there's a contemporary history course and a lot in economics, but I don't think we'll get, I think they'll draw the same kids truthfully. So I think I would only offer one next year and one the following year because contemporary history is running now. So I thought, well, then next year I could offer the economics and then the following year the contemporary history is pretty much everything that could happen. Everything, so.
Thanks. Professor Lynn?
Would you like me to go through all of them or do you want your vote just on the history ones?
Everybody's honored to read them. I don't have.
Okay.
I just want to say that they're great additions, I mean, and I want to thank you for keeping an eye on bringing new electives to children because these look like great courses. And I know it takes a lot to research and like curate them together and whatnot, pick out textbooks. So, thank you so much. Very nice. Okay. Should we do these first and then do the math or do them all at the same time?
Yeah, we'll do them all subject.
Okay, that's fine.
So we'll do the history ones first and then move on to math and then all the rest, I think, before, no, we have some art classes and then tech class.
All right. So if I can have a motion, oh, any, any further questions? We'll be all set to approve the history electives. I'll make a motion to approve the electives, economics, sports and society, war, genocide, and peace.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, subjection, question, curious. Second, I'll go to mathematics.
Okay. The next course, topics in mathematics, is a much needed course. Presently, the only full credit option for students who have completed Algebra II is trigonometry. But there are many students who are not pursuing the pre-calc trajectory and the math department would like to offer another opportunity for these students. So presently, students have struggled in their college math classes because they've not been exposed to certain topics which Mrs. Blake is the, one of the math department chair people is here today. And so they want to provide, the math department wants to provide an opportunity for students to be exposed and to learn about these topics so that chances are they'll be more successful when they go off to either CCRI, RIP, or URI. And Mrs. Blake currently teaches a course similar to this. I think it's at CCRI?
I did teach the course.
She did. So she has the materials that she's very familiar with, the curriculum would be for this, for this opportunity.
Is there anything you'd like to add, students?
No, that's, we really do need something else and I know that students that have gone on and haven't taught set theory and logic at CCRI, they struggle because they're not exposed to that. And I also know that there are a number of our students that trigonometry is just not the best place for them. So we want to, and I did look at all the schools around Charahoe, North Kingstown, Coventry, and they do have other options other than just a trigonometry class. So we feel that our students really need this.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, your motion. I'll make the motion to approve the topics in math. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Question, curious?
Thank you.
So, I guess the art.
The art classes. So why don't we take the first three because they go together, numbers five, six, and seven? And the three dimensional design one, three dimensional design two, and three dimensional design three. And basically, what these, what the art department is doing is just restructuring their course offerings. These are not additional courses, okay? So previously, this three dimensional design one is replacing sculpture one. So they want three dimensional design to, want it to be broader than just the sculpture medium, okay? And the same is for the three dimensional design two and three dimensional design three. So rather than calling the course sculpture one, two, and three, as I said, they just want to broaden the medium so kids can tap into whatever, whatever medium they like best and want to pursue.
I'll make a motion that we approve three dimensional design one, three dimensional design two, three dimensional design three.
Seven.
There's another question. Um, and I, all in favor of this, just a question. Is this something that could that possibly expanded into more of an architectural type of, type of track or something like that? Is the kids interested in that or is that?
I'm going to look at you for a minute. Would that go under the PMT department? The business?
Yeah.
Media technology?
The art department, business, and I think they're starting to, they've been adding quite a few courses in the business department to broaden the potential for connections to careers that are upcoming.
Okay.
So I think if we watch what's happening in the PMT department, we'll start seeing some of that direction. This is really more creative art.
Okay.
And the PMT department is the engineering type stuff that you are covering.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye. The next three on the list, it's the same, same premise, if you will. There's two dimensional design one, two, and three. And what they've done is they have taken their drawing and painting pathways and they've changed the title to two dimensional. So they, the art department is not requesting an addition of any courses. It's just restructuring what is already there.
I'll make a motion to approve two dimensional design one, two dimensional design two, and three dimensional design three.
Seven. Does it have one question?
Yes.
I'm sure they have a plan for this. So like if a child has taken drawing one, this is start next year, it's program, right?
Yes.
And they haven't had painting one, so they would start two dimensional design one. I guess I'll try and see if there's, if it, child have less opportunity, if that needs to be renewed or not.
No. Actually, the idea is that kids have more opportunity because the, the current drawing class focuses only on drawing. The current painting class focuses only on painting. Kids have strengths in either war. And what happens is, it's the same thing that Barbara was alluding to with these two courses. So you might have seven kids that want drawing and five kids that want painting and neither course runs. And this way, you bring all the kids that are interested in two dimensional design and the teacher will work with them on a medium of preference. So if a kid has a background in drawing, they can continue on that pathway or they can learn some painting as well. But this isn't, the art classes are not classes that are designed in a way that every kid starts off in the exact same place, in the same place, very ritualized based on their, their background. So the teachers, Ms. Lynn and Ms. Bichette are well aware that we have students that will be entering who have had courses under previous names that have a limited focus and they're prepared to.
I have all I can say is they'll figure it out.
Differentiation than the other.
Just that, so if they're gonna, if they're working on a pathway for senior four, they have to have drawing one, drawing two, and painting one. So I just, I have a follow up, but I guess if somebody, yeah, I guess they'll integrate the kids on that one or not.
Yes.
Something, just, I'm sure they have that, I'm sure they have that in their mind.
They do.
Okay.
They do.
It's gonna be a transitional, like this is that, yes, but it's gonna be a transition for some of the kids, I think.
Yes, and, and Mrs. Lynn has spoke to me about, as superintendent was saying, it not being a problem, have kids who have different mediums in the same classroom. They'd rather have that than not have the courses run and provide that opportunity for students at all.
Right. So they'll figure out the transition for some of the kids.
Yeah.
It's really an opportunity to get more kids prepared to be eligible for the senior four.
Absolutely. I follow that. I mean, it gets there much quicker, especially with our block scheduling, you know, you have, and it's, you have limited classes you can take. So they're doing drawing one and then the next year they're doing drawing two, the next year, so they don't, they don't have opportunity to take other classes, this kind of, it's more, I agree with you, it's more into a class. It's that, it's a little bit, there's a plan for the integration. Okay. Sorry about that, I'm very listening. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Seven. Okay. Just a tech for business.
Okay. We currently offer a tech for life course that I believe all students take. Okay. This course is the tech for, like the math course where they need to have a trajectory for students who are not going into the trigonometry pre-calc. Mrs. Kennedy and her department wanted to have an opportunity for students who do plan to pursue a career in tech education. So this course, as she explains it, will, will go deeper and be more rigorous and focus on the industry standards that students need in order to be ready to pursue those fields.
And so this would satisfy the graduation requirement for technology, which means the children that take this class do not have to take the tech for life classes, just.
Depends on the pathway.
Yes. It's not adding another requirement, it just is another option to meet the tech requirement that we have already placed in this.
Okay. Any other questions?
This, this would be an area where really reaching out into, you know, local businesses would be huge, and especially, you know, with the, you know, the banking industry, it's across the board, but we can get some folks in here to, to connect the dots for, you know, what the curricular mandate versus what's expected, that'd be, that'd be a good thing.
I'll have that follow up conversation with her. I think she does plan on that, but I will make sure that that's part of the curriculum.
Okay. Your motion?
Make a motion to accept the course of tech for business.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have our policy 6265.
Okay. Policy 6265 is actually being considered a new policy, although we have, we have had a policy in place regarding use of personal cell phones and use of school department phones for personal use. Policy was previously written in 1997 and as you can imagine, we're almost 20 years past 1997 and the, the times have changed just a little bit. So it, it does meet the same objectives that the policy in 97 meets, except that it's more up to date. Basically, it says that all staff have a professional responsibility of not using school time in either school or personal phones for personal use when they are involved in professional responsibilities. And I'm not saying that we have a widespread issue, but we certainly have had conversations with people at, at different times. The, we were very careful in writing this policy that there, there certainly are appropriate times when personal phones can be used. I mean, we, we even have some communication systems within the schools that use text messaging to send out emergency information as an example. Obviously, that's fine. Receiving emergency telephone calls is fine. It's really just about making sure that people are modeling professional behavior for kids because we are holding kids to the same standard. So this is an updated policy. I think the old one used like pagers and things that no longer are, are in our schools. So.
Can I ask a question?
It's a first read because it's very different than the old policy is.
Question. I'm wondering why this raises to the level of policy as opposed to if there is an issue of adjustment individually?
Well, we, we certainly do, but this, we've had a policy. We've always had a policy relative to it and it was out of date. So what we did with the policy handbook is go through and make a list of all the out of date policies and we're just updating them.
Right. I'm just not, I'm just not real clear why we need this specific policy. I actually was saying it was outdated and talked about. It just seems to me like this is a problem, should be dealt individually as opposed to policy. I'm wondering why we really need a policy to specifically address this. That's, that's what I'm asking.
I think policies are not always written as a way to address problems. They're written as a way to have some documentation of consistency across the whole district. You know, I, we're not writing this because we have a widespread issue, but it just is providing some consistent language of expectations. And again, you know, we have a number of policies in place that are, that are, that were never written because there's an issue, but they're written based on the fact that we want to have some consistent guidelines for administrators and so forth.
And I actually agree with Valerie because I, when I read it, I'm like, wow, there must be a problem. I immediately thought that, so I'm glad you said that. But I think that in the first paragraph, the sentence that struck me was the last one, and that's why I thought it was an issue. I just thought it was a little on the harsh side, that's all. But I understand, I think, I agree with the policy. I agree that it's unprofessional, it shouldn't be done, I mean, I agree. But I did think it was an issue.
Just not they don't roll.
Watch if the language in that paragraph is a carryover.
I was looking for the old one, I couldn't find it. I was curious about that.
That's very interesting.
It wasn't on the website.
I've actually significantly toned it down.
Did you?
Significantly toned it down.
I, I checked with a couple of school districts and nobody had a specific policy towards cell phones, which it just makes me a little uneasy that we're telling professionals that it's not professional for them to use their phones, which we all agree, but that we feel it rises to a call. I would hope as professionals, we all act professionally and if we don't, it seems to me the administrator shouldn't does that. That's, that's my concern reading this. I, I feel like it, it kind of says to our employees that, you know, we need to monitor them and that they're doing something wrong. I know it's a first read, but it makes me very uneasy.
Will it go out to the staff when it's approved? Like, will they all get a copy?
I'm gonna go out on a limb and say that there's a member of our audience that I'm sure has probably already sent something out to the staff. Just going out on a limb.
Haven't. Haven't. But, yeah, I don't know why it's a policy. I've actually never heard of it as being a problem, not that it's any of my business, but, you know, I've never heard of anybody that taking out their phone in the class and having chit chats with someone, you know.
It just seems very punitive. Disrespectful, it's always, to put a policy like this in place.
Well, where I've worked, we've always had policies like this. It, it makes it very clear what your expectations are and that's all this is, is just setting what the expectations are, that's it. So.
Yeah, we are, I think, of my most private industry, private enterprises have some sort of policy like this.
Yeah.
I think the whole paragraph right under 6265 is unnecessary, kind of inflammatory. But other than that, I do agree with the adoption of a policy. And I, I would just question the spelling of the word device throughout.
I wonder about myself.
I've always spelled it with a C and an S, but I'm. I'm surprised I spelled it like that.
That's exactly what I thought.
So I'm guessing that you would have loved the previously written.
I wish we could see it.
I'll, I'll bring it just for your reading pleasure because I, I did, I did actually make a statement when this first draft was, was sent to us. I, I couldn't even, I couldn't even release that paragraph the way that it was written. So I can work on that some more. No problem.
Did you say that there was an employee manual or policy that includes these kinds of parameters already, but separate?
There's a previously, there's a previous policy, but that's, that's all that I.
Okay, so this isn't already covered in a handout that's given to hires?
No. No.
Is it in the teacher's contract at all?
No.
Is it?
It's in the student handbook.
Right.
And I, and I would suspect that the faculty reminds the students when the students, so again, you know, my comments are kind of along everybody else's comments that I would expect that the teachers would be, and the faculty and the staff, faculty, teachers, same thing, faculty and staff would behave in a professional manner. And actually, if I can just add, the previous policy basically said no cell phones, no handheld devices, pagers, whatever whatsoever. It had, it absolutely provided zero flexibility for staff around when it was appropriate. And so our, one of the issues that we had with this policy is that our practice wasn't consistent with what we had in policy because we do have situations where it's acceptable. You know, in, in 2005 compared to 1997, the primary method of teachers receiving emergency phone calls is through their own personal phones rather than going through the office. So things have changed. We have, we have schools where every teacher has their own cell phone and the, and the principal is able to send out an emergency text if necessary. That's acceptable. So there are things that we currently do that were in violation of the previously written policies, but again, it's a reflection of the fact that lots has changed in the last 20 years. So this policy in comparison to what was written in 1997 is actually more flexible. But I've done some work on the first paragraph. I certainly can, I can write what's necessary in a sentence and make it really broad. If that's what people prefer, I'm fine with that.
That was my preference. I just don't see the need for it and I feel, again, I just, I think it's somewhat disrespectful to tell people how to be professional when the obvious professional one is an issue which will be addressed. Yeah.
Could you interest Barbara?
Oh, sorry. I just wanted to say that superintendent, Erin Eaton says that we sometimes get emergency messages at work, which we do from our administration, but almost none of us ever see it because our phones are off. And unless it goes out to everybody, including the kids, like an early dismissal, we hear from the students, oh, good evening, 20 minutes, you know? We're like, well, how do you know? You know, like, whoa, we just got the. You know, the teachers don't have no gun generally, you know? They're, you know, they might be sitting in our bag, if they go off, all of a sudden you just turn it off, but you don't even look at it because it's so embarrassing that your phone is off, you know? You go, oh, god. So, I don't know. Obviously, I would not have a policy.
Right. Let's see. We have the school day, the schedule for 2016. Okay, straightforward.
We do want to make sure that you don't hear or see the same presentations year after year. So last year we agreed on a, focus on the use of technology given where the district was. We have not had that discussion yet as a group of administrators, but we will talk about maybe a common theme for this year's presentations so that principals will be ready.
Just as a comment, some of the, some of the video, the presentations were quite lengthy. We may want to encourage conciseness, if that's a word.
I did. Thank you. I did prior to last year, actually. Please, please do it again. Just saying. I'll reiterate that again.
Thank you.
But I, I can't promise that there still will not be some variability based on the last couple of years. They were all wonderful.
They're great.
Okay. I want to finish business. Is there a capital project remaining? Do we have any?
It was embedded in the, in my status report and just for the committees, just to keep them up to speed. We did meet last week as the, our first formal school building, school building committee, capital project, which is kind of an.
Pretty straightforward.
We do want to make sure that you don't hear or see the same presentations year after year. So last year, we agreed on a, focused on the use of technology given where the district was. We have not had that discussion yet, as administrators both will talk about maybe a common theme for this year's presentations, so that the principals will be ready.
Just as a comment, some of the, some of the video presentations were quite lengthy. We may want to encourage conciseness, if that's a word.
I did.
I don't remember the last term.
I did prior to last year, actually.
Please, please do it again.
Just saying. I'll reiterate that again.
Thank you.
But I, I can't promise that there still will not be some variability based on the last couple of years. They were all wonderful.
They're great.
They were wonderful. Okay, we have a finished business. Is there a capital project meeting? Is there?
It was embedded in the, in my status report, and just for the committees, just to keep them up to speed. We did meet last week as the, our first formal school building, building committee capital project, which is kind of an introductory meeting. Really, what's going on right now is review of the stage, uh, stage one progress, which is there are sixteen elements that we're putting together to give to our architect, Lou Serrato, who will submit that on eleven sixteen, so next Monday, and then from there we await feedback. And this is all, focuses mostly on very high-level view of engineering, the plumbing, and the envelope of the building, demographics, certain, you know, this kind of a narrative of the district. Stage two is when we get into starting to prioritize and monetize, and that's when we really get more engaged. And I just want to, at some point, the coordination of the, remember Rafna with your quest of a, of, maybe address some of those. That could probably come out of a subsequent building committee meeting. It would probably be good to vet some of the stuff at that level prior to, in a day and this level.
That's fine. That's fine. Thank you.
Let's go back to the presentation schedule. I guess we need a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion to accept the presentation schedule as stated.
Accepting it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I want to speak about the Metcalf incident. So as you're aware, there was an incident that occurred at Metcalf on Friday of last week, and the incident involved some, some trucks on the campus changing the exterior lighting, and there was a report that an individual child had been exposed to some of the exhaust fumes from the trucks. So we've, we'd sent out a communication to families. We were in communication with the particular family once we were aware that, that had occurred. And, and I've had some, several conversations with the principal of the building. Bob has met with the director of maintenance, Mr. Plumley, and I just wanted to report that we have had a conversation with the vendor and discussed the, the issue that, that took place, and we've made arrangements for all of that kind of work to be done outside of school hours. And then we also took a look at our policies. We actually have on the books a no idling or limited idling policy, however it is restricted to school buses. So we have a policy subcommittee meeting that is scheduled for, oh, I think, I think the week after me, no, next Monday, for Monday, and one of the things that we talked about was expanding that policy for other vehicles that may be on our campus. So from a, from a, from the standpoint of the district with respect to the issue that occurred, we've had a policy, we've had a conversation with the maintenance department, and we've had a conversation with the vendor because we want to make sure that that kind of thing doesn't happen again. And, you know, we, again, we sent something out to all of the families. We had nothing but, but positive feedback from them, just thanking us for sending out the information, but we know that there was a child who, you know, was exposed to, to the fume, so we wanted to make sure that we address that in a way that we could, we could ensure that that kind of stuff doesn't happen again.
Thank you. Okay, we have a report, meetings, some school planning meetings. Everybody's all good with all that, Karen? Is there a next meeting? Correct.
Make a motion to go into executive session under the forty-two, forty-six, five, which one?
I keep saying.
Just general, okay. Negotiations. And also D forty-two, forty-six, five, A P security.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.